Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the September 26th Board of Selectment meeting. And as always, we'll start it with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of September 12th, 2024?
Lauren Rabin, so moved. Janet Stone-McWiggin, I second.
All is in favor. Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Rabin, yes.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, yes.
Thanks. And then lastly, if there are a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting of September 12th, 2024.
Lauren Rabin, so moved.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, I second.
All is in favor. Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Rabin, yes.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, yes.
Okay, I'll go to first selectmen's updates. I'll try and get through them pretty quickly. This week, we welcome Marisma Bank to Greenwich. It's their headquarters. We had Governor Lamont there. It was a good day. We had the DECD Commissioner O'Keefe there. We had Commissioner Perez of the Banking Department, Senator Fazio, Senator Miller of Stanford. So we're excited about that. And then the day before that, we had the Lieutenant Governor here in town to celebrate Greenwich getting an $800,000 public safety grant for enhancements at three central locations, central intersections, which will be also ADA compliant. It will improve the markings, sightlines, and the technology there. So we're excited about that. The endeavor to make our town safer continues. So we're gonna hopefully have every intersection in town covered at some point. So we're working towards that. And today at 2 o'clock, I'm gonna be over at the Tianor Zoa Emergency Operations Center to celebrate Greenwich being recognized as a storm-ready community as we're in the middle of hurricane season. And Hurricane Helene is now bearing down on Florida, but I don't think we'll see too much of that. But congratulations to all of our public safety units, including our Emergency Operations Director Joe LaSella, who's been just absolutely terrific for us. So that's at 2 o'clock. I hope to see everybody there. Congratulations also to our own Scott and Icy France for receiving Greenwich Hospital's inaugural Luminate Health Award. And that's Friday. Scott and Icy do so much for our town, so it's great to see them being recognized. Next Monday, 9 o'clock, we're gonna be doing the groundbreaking at Koskab Library. So that's we're excited about that. It's over on Suburban Avenue and at the Post Road. So it's gonna be a little bit of an expansion there. They've kind of outgrown where they have footprint right now. So that's something that's been in the works for a while. I'll be swearing in three new police officers on the first at 1:30 over at the Public Safety Complex. And the other day, I sworn Larry Dunbar as a new parking enforcement officer. We wish Larry the best. Next week, we'll be visiting Parkway at 10:30 on October 2nd, and then back here for a proclamation for Rare Disease Awareness Day. We've been doing that since 2020 here in town. And a rare disease is something where it affects over 200,000 people. And you'd be surprised, some of the afflictions that are on that list. On the 5th, we have Scoutarama at 10 o'clock. Janet was probably gonna mention that. I just realized it. Sorry. On the 6th Sunday is a Walk Against Domestic Violence at usually in Bruce Park. It said Roger Sherman Baldwin Park. Did they get switched?
Yes.
Okay. Just make note of that, because it's usually over on what we used to call Party Lane, but it's Woods Road is the real name. Oktoberfest is 3 o'clock at a local business in Koskab at 12 o'clock on the same day, Sunday, 300 Valley Road. And then we have a 12 o'clock ceremony on October 7th, 12 o'clock, to mark the one-year anniversary of the tragic attack over in Israel. And again, it'll be at 12 o'clock on the 7th. And on the 8th, we start the Greenwich Economic Forum. So that's gonna be a couple days of events here over on the waterfront. And then on the 10th, we have the grand launch of the Greenwich Train Station and Retail Transportation Project. It's gonna be called Greenwich Crossing. Got a couple new restaurants coming in there, a brand-new building which sorely needed over there. And so it's gonna transform that part of the avenue. So we're bottom of the avenue. So we're looking forward to all that stuff. And I also want to welcome our brand-new Town Administrator and Chief Operating Officer, Kate Bush, is over here in the white. Say hello to Kate if you're in the down our end of the hallway there. We're looking forward to working with her. So welcome, Kate. Good morning, Lauren.
Good morning, everyone. As I mentioned in our last meeting, needing to discuss the ADA and advocacy advisory committee, I did meet with them on Monday of this week. We have shifted that committee from being a first selectman committee to being a Board of Selectment Committee. And in looking at the composition of the current members, I think the way that our description was written isn't gonna isn't gonna fit, because we can nominate residents and employees. Many of the members are actually from nonprofits. We do have a member that's neither a resident or an employee. We also have to think about party affiliation. So in meeting with the Vice Chair, we think we can make some minor modifications to the way that we list the members, similar to either the Energy Management Advisory Committee, or maybe even a building committee with some of the town employees, or some of the representation being more liaisons than actual members. So I'll be coming back. I've already asked Ken to put it as an agenda item for our October 10th meeting, so that we can, you know, just vote on the changes, because we have started to get the applications in since I met with them on Monday. With respect to the Central Middle School Building Committee, and sorry, I have to look at my notes. I can't just do this from my head. Next Monday or Tuesday, the whole project is gonna be going out to bid. Just as a recap, the long-lead items were already out to bid, and the FFNE furniture and things of that nature will be going out as a Phase 3. We still believe that we're gonna be starting construction on January 2nd, 2025. But we will be hopefully having the town accelerate the permitting process, so that we could get the building permit. The state was actually unusually delayed. I know that Steph Cowie, our RTM representative on the Building Committee, reported this last week at the RTM meeting. So with the delay in the state approval, we're just hoping to catch up and get some time through the town building and permitting process. And that's my update for today. Thanks.
Thank you, Lauren. Good morning, Janet.
Good morning. And absolutely, our calendars are filled with exciting events. I'll add to our list is on Saturday is Start to the Finish. That's a walk at Greenwich Point. And after that, at 11:30, Koskab Library is celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month. I'm looking forward to that. On Monday, the Greenwich League of Women Voters is hosting a webinar on election integrity. And included on the panel will be our registrars of voters. Saturday, October 5th, is Pathways Gala at Burning Tree, starting at 6 o'clock. And Fred is absolutely right. The Sunday's YWCA Walk the Walk is at Roger Sherman Baldwin Park this year. They've changed venues. I believe it's because it's going to be both a walk and a race. But I am very happy just to do the walk. And that's it. That's it for me.
Challenge you to do both.
Oh, dear. Okay, we'll see. We'll see. If you run, if you run with me.
Yes, we'll run slow.
Okay.
Or walk fast.
Or walk fast. Okay. Well, thank you so much. And yeah, lots of events coming up. So, all right, we don't have a really big schedule today. We have one item under Old Business, and I see Ian Brown from DPW here. And this is the amendment to the traffic ordinance over in Byram for weight-restricted trucks on the streets there, William Street West and Veterans Way. And just want to let you know, we did receive an email today from Claire Cogallan, who's supportive of this, but also wanted to highlight the safety for students, and that's why she supports it.
Understood. This is Ian Brown with the Department of Public Works, here on behalf of the Public Works for their request for the addition of two lines in the traffic ordinance for the addition of four-ton weight limits on William Street West and Veterans Way as well. I'm not gonna rehash the whole project since we, you know, went over it two weeks ago, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Ian. I haven't heard anything negative about it. So besides the one positive today, so no colleagues have heard anything.
No. And then I think, in addition to the support of it, it was if there could be extra, once it is finished, some extra enforcement. And I don't know, enforcement's not the right word, but extra presence there from our enforcement officers, just to make sure everyone understands what needs to happen at that intersection.
Well, of course, the DPW isn't responsible much for enforcement, but we'll pass the new information along to Chief Heavey. And I know Sergeant J.D. Smith was included on the memo as well. So after today, I will be getting in touch with them, just to let them know that, you know, should this pass, ordinance change is going to be into effect, and that this is, you know, their new responsibilities, I suppose. But I did write down a couple just general questions that I don't know if anyone watching had. But I know that a big question when we do stuff like this is, will emergency vehicles, delivery trucks be able to travel through these types of roads with vehicle weight restrictions? And I will say that, yes, emergency vehicles and delivery trucks will still be able to operate regularly. The goal for this type of ordinance would be to prevent through trucks using this as kind of a shortcut to make it to I-95 in this area. And I know that school buses would be another question. And from what I understand, there are no stops on these roads, school bus stops. I believe there's one for Greenwich High School at the intersection of Delavan, Chestnut, and Veterans Way, but that will be unaffected.
Okay, thank you. Yes, we've it certainly improved safety over there, this pump out of the intersection, but also we've seen the trucks, the damage they've done several times. So I think it'll be welcomed. So thank you, Ian.
Thank you.
All righty. So we're ready to vote on that one.
Lauren Rabin, I move that we approve the request for amendment to traffic ordinance Schedule XXD, Weight-Restricted Streets.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, I second.
All is in favor. Fred Camillo's a yes.
Sorry, there was a public, a late hand raised from the public. I'll let her speak after the vote, if you don't mind.
Sure, absolutely. Where were we? Did you second it?
I seconded.
All is in favor. Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Rabin, yes.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, yes.
Thanks. Thanks, Ken.
Yes, Lorraine Taylor did wish to speak on this. She had reached out to me in advance about it. So I'm gonna allow her to speak right now. Ms. Taylor, you should be able to speak now, if you unmute.
Yes, good morning. Can you hear me?
Good morning. Good morning.
Can't hear you, Lauren.
Good morning, Lorraine.
Hi, excuse me. Yes, Lorraine Taylor here. I own the building at 302 Delavan Avenue in Byram, where all this discussion has been happening, that I'm interested to participate in, but I haven't been given advanced direct notice about a lot of this. Ian Brown sent me an email this morning indicating that no letters had been sent regarding this. It would have been helpful if the letter did go out, some kind of advance notice. But Ken Boersch just acknowledged that he received the form submission, that I had routed through the form contact all RTM members last night, because I tried to access through the Form Center, the specific one, he said, is dedicated for comments in relation to this meeting, but it wasn't available. So one question I have, how many forms were received on this discussion point today?
Did you mind them?
Ms. Taylor, I received no forms other than yours on this.
Oh, okay. Thank you. So I did comment about the dumpsters on this form. I sent contact all RTM members. I still haven't heard from Police Chief Heavey regarding the prior discussion of my request for some maps that were generated by the town a few years ago, acknowledging the dumpsters position in the private parking lot at my building, 302 Delavan Avenue. So hopefully, I'll get follow-up from Police Chief Heavey. So as far as today goes with this vote occurring on the weight restriction, it sounds like dumpsters won't be, excuse me, carting trucks for dumpsters with forklifts won't be addressed in this ordinance. So I'll have to follow up separately.
Yeah, yeah. Ms. Taylor, the idea for this ordinance is to prevent cut-throughs, not to affect anything else. It was being used as a cut-through, and it was causing damage. So that's what this ordinance is addressing.
Correct. But dumpsters, also the large size in the forklift, years ago, when I was at the property and staying at the apartment there back in 2016, I did see myself the way that the dumpsters with the forklifts were had an adverse impact and kind of dangerous. So that being said, going forward, I would like to further discuss these questions about safety matters and sidewalks and bumpouts. I had provided material for a prior meeting that really wasn't further discussed regarding the size of the building, the frontage, its impact on the sidewalk, and the road, and the parking. And this commercial space may have outlived its usefulness with all the difficulties it's causing. So I'd like to further discuss that at a convenient time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Have a great day. Okay, going on to new business, we have the request to raise the Israeli flag at Town Hall on October 7th. And I don't know if Merrill or Becca's here.
They are not gonna be attending. They asked you to speak.
Oh, okay. So what that is, is just it's a remembrance of what happened last year. It's a short ceremony, flag raising, and then there'll be another one at Temple Shalom at 7 o'clock, but that's not a town-run one. So we're just keeping with the policy that we had there. So it's obviously time-sensitive. So we'll, if they want to entertain a vote, motion?
Lauren Rabin, I motion that we approve the request to raise the Israeli flag at Town Hall on October 7th.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, I second.
All is in favor. Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Rabin, yes.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, yes.
Okay, thank you. And then the last item is a request to close a portion of Sound Beach Avenue on December 7th for the First Light 2024, which we do every year. And our buddy Rich Fulton is Rich with us.
He is supposed to be here. He is not here, but there is no fundamental difference with anything they've done in the past. They are working with Roger Drenth at the Police Department on this. And this is only a first read. We'll be back for a second. But there's no fundamental change other than the date.
Perfect. Yeah. Okay, this is something that we all look forward to, and Rich and all the merchants there do a great job. So we'll visit that again in two weeks. And we go on. That's the last item. So this is one of the shorter meetings we've ever had. So we have the public comment portion, and I see a few people here. Hi, Lisa. Just come up and just identify yourself for the record.
Is this on?
Green, yeah.
Is it on? Yes, great. Lisa Nguyen Salvatore. And I am here today to just mention and inquire about the incredibly loud HVAC system that we've been enduring for well over a year at Hamilton Avenue. I had written several of you. I'd only heard back from Mr. Camillo and Ms. McGeegan. Is that you?
McGeegan.
McGeegan, okay. Out of 17 officials that nobody has gotten back to me about. This has been going on for a year. And one of my questions is, is that I understand that there is an emergency variance issued by Carolyn Basely. But my question here is really, what constitutes a length of an emergency, number one? And number two, I also wanted to know if the Board of Selectmen's Office, if they can issue a variance, but only after a public hearing was done. And was that public hearing ever done? I don't know, because I haven't heard back from anybody. So...
The Board of Ed Administration did not get back to you on that?
Nobody did. No.
I think Joe Pacora had reached out, too, about it.
Yes, right. And so I understand, as of, I think, late last night, I talked with Joe Pacora. And I also have one of my neighbors here, Kat Terranova. Many people couldn't attend because they're schoolteachers. And fortunately, I have a private practice that I could attend today. But it really has become a health issue to, I don't know, have any of you been over there to hear it?
I've been over there. I haven't heard it at night, but you have a recording?
Twelve hours a day. And I just think it's worthy to hear it.
And that's 12 hours, Lisa?
12 hours a day. It started, I started working with Wendy Zhao a bit, Senior Management Analyst, and she was lovely. But nothing has really been done. And the equivalent of like a chain-link fence with Saran Wrap is put around it to, is supposed to be environmentally correct and to deafen the noise. And it hasn't done that at all. So it's also impeding on our businesses. And our energy bills have gone up. We can't have windows open because it's so loud. Now, if we're 25 feet from the fence, my request was, why not get an acoustical engineer and then build a proper enclosure? So I'm just here out of frustration, and also in behalf of all my other great little community there and the 10 units that we have, to find out really, what is the plan? Because if those are issuing a noise ordinance, then those who are complying with the noise ordinance, and isn't there a decibel ordinance? And according to Wendy, it's 40 to 50% above a loud decibels. So...
That was 40, 50, above it. I'm gonna reach out to the Administration this morning.
Okay.
And talk to Ben Brannion and see, get an update there. Because wasn't it supposed to, when they gave you the, you said Caroline did an emergency?
Variance.
Variance on that.
Correct.
Usually, an emergency variance or sometimes it has a timeline.
Right.
And it has a window. So are you aware of any?
No, I've heard nothing.
Okay.
Of all the officials that I spoke to, not one person got back to me, except for the two of you.
Somebody will this week. Somebody will this week. We'll get an answer on it.
Because at this point, again, you have people who are, you're impeding on our income, too. Some of us, I have a private practice, but I also work from home. We can't conduct Zoom meetings when we have this screeching noise. And recently, it's been going on and off, and on and off. So it sounds like a siren.
We don't have this in any other schools, right?
Well, this is the temporary HVAC because of the issue that happened within...
How temporary is that?
Yeah. Well, I think part of it is tied up because the RTM isn't gonna approve the appropriation to get a new system, because the Energy Management Advisory Committee wants them to go a certain route. So it's a tangle.
Yeah, I think, I think, I think the residents are being held hostage here because of that. We gotta see if we can do something. So, all right. Thank you. I'll ask them, and if we can get some, a better timeframe, and also if there's any other way to abate that, because it's, that would drive me crazy, too.
Yeah, there actually is. I know on 67 Holly Hill Lane, I know that the Pacoras had to build a very similar structure to encase it, so that the noise would go up, not straight. Unfortunately, my apartment is the one that hits the worst, which is dead center. When you measure decibels, you do middle and end.
But if Joey and Sylvester built, would that help here?
It should, it should help if the acoustical engineer comes in to really do that, because, again, it's, at this point, it's a public health concern to have constant grating noise for 12 hours a day, and on the weekends, seven days a week. It's unacceptable at this point. So I'm here just really in behalf of everybody in our units. And I don't know whether Kat, if you have anything you'd like to, yeah, okay. But thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
There's really three pieces to this. One is that when the variance was issued, the noise ordinance came under the Board of Health. And now it's since then come under us. So I think this probably fell through the cracks. No matter what happens, I don't think the variance is the solution. I mean, there's two solutions. One is baffling, right? Because, and so that's a technical fix. But underlying is that, to Lauren's point, this is the HVAC system that needs to either be replaced or repaired. And that, you know, whatever the RTM and the Board of Ed decide, and ultimately, I guess it's the estimate in taxation, right? Because they have to provide money. The construction can't happen when kids are in school. So we know that even if we said, you know, this is gonna be the fix, it's not gonna happen tomorrow. So...
And that's right. And thank you for the clarification. And also, have you reached out to the RTM for District 3? Okay, that's, I would start there. I don't know who the, the chairman is.
Steve, isn't it Steve Rubin?
Steven, yeah. Steve Rubin's the chair.
Who's also the chair of the Education Subcommittee.
So, yes, Steve Rubin, RTM District 3 Chikahominy. I would also get them involved, too. And I'll, I'll reach out to the, and I'll shoot him a note, too. But anyway.
Hi, Kat Terranova. I first wanted to say thank you for approving to raise the Israeli flag on October 7th. As a Jewish community member in Greenwich, that really means a lot to me, and I really appreciate that my community cares about that. Moving past that, I just wanted to make myself known. I am an Executive Director of one of the biggest election integrity nonprofits in the country. I work with politics and government all the time. I know how these things work, and how long they can take, and how much redlining and politicking there can be. It sounds like exactly what you said. There's a huge disconnect. Things have fallen through the cracks, and it seems to be bouncing through so many different offices and falling through different people's hands. Also, like you said, Janet, the underlying issue is that they built this system underneath the playground of the school. And so now, they keep going back and forth. They run the equipment all summer long. It's extremely loud and intrusive. And then during the time when they actually should be replacing it in the summer, nothing actually ever happens. And so there's a short period of time that they can actually solve the problem, which is when the kids are not there, which is during the summer, which means that there needs to be a strategic plan and a specific timeline for getting this done, or this is gonna go on forever. I just moved in last October. I was not aware of the HVAC system. I almost don't even remember it being there. But I do want to reiterate that Lisa's not exaggerating, that it is extremely loud, that one of the reasons I left New York City was because of the noise, and I didn't want to hear it anymore. And the reason I lived, moved to Greenwich was because you can hear birds, and you can hear bugs and crickets, and I love it. And that is a huge part of why people come to this community. I think there's a standard of living that people associate with Greenwich that I think should be upheld. I think the issue here is that the right people, maybe beyond the two people that got back to Lisa, it sounds like, you know, Fred himself, are not completely aware of what's going on. And it's gonna take an acute level of awareness and some squeaky wheels for people to actually move the needle on this, because this is one of those things that's very easy to be like, well, it doesn't affect me. I don't have to listen to the sound of constant gears grinding every day. We're just gonna file this, you know, to the end of, to the end of the meeting. And so I really want people to understand that Lisa and I will be squeaky wheels. We will be here. It's annoying. It's not that the standard that Greenwich should be operating at. And I really think it'll be better for the entire community if this is resolved, and not just temporarily with an enclosure, but also with a long-term plan of how they're gonna dig up whatever is underneath the earth. I get it. It's a problem. It's costly. I also just heard that there are, they've been talking about whether they were going to dig up the ground, and that would be one solution, or they had an alternative solution. Apparently, they are very similar in price. To resolve the overall issue, the two options they have been looking at are both extremely similar in price. That actually worries me, because that sounds like more time and room for debate, right? If one was exponentially cheaper, that would probably be what they choose to do, and we would move on. Now I'm thinking, great, now they're gonna debate for two years about which one makes more sense, because they cost the same price. That's not, that's not how I want this to go.
Yeah. And again, it, well, you know, it's other entities that are gonna have to get involved here. We will circle back about the noise thing. And, because now we got, we got two. So I have a note to call our town attorney today, and this is the second one. So, okay, we'll see what we can do on that. And then we'll, I'll also reach out to Steve Rubin, which you probably both should do, too, for your RTM. They're your representatives on the, on the RTM. But I'll also reach out to Ben Brannion and Dr. Jones.
Thank you for letting me be heard.
Thank you. Much appreciated.
I just want to clarify, because I'm not, I've been following this closely. I'm the liaison to the Energy Management Advisory Committee. And the Board of Ed just released its Capitol Projects Report, and... its capital projects report, and, and in there is this report from, that company is called ACOM, looking, looking into this question. I'm not sure, it's a 63-page report, so I haven't really dug that deeply, but I'm not sure if, what they've concluded about the cost, so I just want to put that out there at this point. I'm not sure that we've concluded one way or the other what's more expensive or what's less expensive, yeah.
Yeah, and again, if there is a, the decibel violation, then we can, we can rule on something short-term, not, it's not going to be the long-term one, that's going to have to be the other entities, but certainly, we have taken that over, as you know, so, all right, thank you very much, appreciate it. Okay.
We had one more speaker, I believe, coming in person, but she's here. Okay, well then we have two, two people online. Richard Fulton did log on, so I will just allow him to quickly speak, and he can, we can tell him that everything's good to go on that, but...
Yes, hi, Rich.
Hey, good morning, Freddie, can you hear me?
We can hear you loud and clear, how are you?
All right, apologize, new cable modem last night, and you know my, my location, there's a lot of technology here that needs to switch over, so I apologize for the tardiness.
No problem, no problem at all, perfect timing.
So, yeah, but we, we did deal with that item, and it'll be come back in two weeks, but we don't anticipate any issues.
Okay, I appreciate that. I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank you guys, and to let you know, we're adding a, a new item to Old Greenwich this year. We are in the beginning stages of planning and fundraising to light the trees on Sound Beach Avenue and Arcadia Road. Marcos Torno, Icy France, and I have been working on that for the past couple of weeks. We, as you probably all know, had a few buildings change-hand in town, about half the buildings. So, working with the new landlords, which happens to be my landlord and, and a couple dozen other tenants in town, but we are, all systems go there, and working with the building department, electrician, and the light installer, so look for Old Greenwich to be brighter than ever, we're calling it Light Up Sound Beach, and probably beginning of November, we'll start lighting the trees, and, and by the time first light comes around, it'll be as bright as you've ever seen it downtown. Website has a link for donations for anybody that's interested in supporting, supporting the lights, and, and appreciate it.
Thanks, Rich, I know you guys have been working on that, that's going to be terrific, it'll match what's going on in Cos Cob and downtown Greenwich, and maybe we'll get over to the Western side after that, but really looking forward to that and to the event.
Exactly, appreciate it, sorry again for the tardiness.
No problem, have a good day, Rich.
All right, good stuff, you too.
Thanks.
One last speaker, Mr. Peter Alexander did want to speak in public comment period.
Oh, good morning, Peter.
You're all ready to go.
I'm unmuted.
You're unmuted.
Ever?
The floor is yours.
I was wondering what the process is to separate planning and zoning to planning only, and then zoning as a separate entity, because especially lately, we've been on alert, and there have been institutionalizing of the transport-oriented development and Section 8s, and I think we really need to plan to tailor that to the town and its physiography rather than the grants that we spend time trying to get from the state and the feds. I was wondering what process that would be and how we could do it. The plan of conservation and development is meeting a state standard, but a planning, separate planning group could really help shape our future. Thank you, Ms. Oldrey.
Thank you, Peter.
Thank you.
Thank you, Peter, I know they've always gone together for a reason, and certainly as far as any type of ordinance, local ordinance or state law, there's, our town attorney is not present here today, but...
He is on Zoom, but Margarita Albin did want to respond, I believe, can we recognize her?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Margarita, you're good to go. You are muted, though. Margarita, you're muted.
She's having a problem, I could call her.
Margarita, would you care for Fred to call you on that? I guess it's, if you're muted, it's a moot point, but...
Let me see, I just sent her a note.
But when she gets on, she says it's a good idea.
I'm not holding my...
She's an EMT also.
All right. Well, as we wait for Margarita, Barbara Schellenberg is asking to speak as well, and Barbara, if you will unmute, you can speak.
And, and Margarita is trying to get on.
Okay.
Something's happening.
Barbara, you're good to go.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, Barbara.
Okay, I, I don't know why the camera's not on. You know, Margarita actually might be more familiar with the process than I am, I think we would have to take a look at the charter. However, I, I, it's not something that I would recommend. Most municipalities throughout the state have combined planning and zoning commissions, which makes a lot of sense, and in fact, the few that have divided commissions, two separate commissions, have found issues, because a lot of times, planning and zoning actually does go together, and in those communities, they've actually worked to combine their commissions. So, it's not something that I would recommend, but I'll, I'll certainly let, you know, Margarita speak to it.
Thank you, Barbara, and I'll, I'll circle back with you later about the noise ordinances.
Margarita is unmuted now, so Margarita, if you care to speak.
I think she has to be promoted.
She should be, okay, there, now we're good.
Okay, now, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
We can hear you.
Okay, good. Okay, so first of all, yes, the charter would have to be revised. Second, to Barbara's point, only the cities, with some minor exceptions, only cities separate planning from zoning. Third, Barbara also correct, everybody who's done it has huge issues because it's a doubling up of the work. The most important thing, though, is that planning under state law, the responsibilities that are given to a planning commission are not what you would expect. It is not planning, it is subdivisions primarily, and it is street numbering, but it is not, it is not the big picture thing other than doing the P O C D. That said, it doesn't limit us to only doing those things, so we are very active, as Fred knows, in Hartford, pleading our case and thinking long-term, and we have a detailed affordable housing plan, a detailed long-range plan, and we do routinely have planning sessions in which we think about all these issues. But technically, the state statutes do not make P and Z, the planning commissions, a type of corporate planning as we would think of corporate or strategic planning, it's just not how it works. So, it wouldn't address the issue. The key is, P and Z is trying to do that, and yes, it's a challenge, there are, it's not Section 8, I think Mr. Alexander is referring to the 830Gs applications, and those are a zoning function, and if we had a planning commission, we wouldn't be able to do anything about it. Sad answer enough? Barbara, did I hit enough of the questions that you had?
Certainly, you, you know, you, you got more specific, but it, it goes along with, with my thinking, which is, it's definitely not something that's recommended.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate the explanations from both of you.
Terrific, terrific responses, thank you so much. It reinforces a couple of things that really made me hopeful when you were up in Hartford all the time, Fred, is that there were ordinances passed that we could have five mile-an-hour roads and village districts voted on by the owners in the villages separately and individually. So, I completely agree with what everyone said regarding all the ordinances and the zoning and the red tape and keeping the lawyers busy, but the Greenwich Town Plan, I'll update that after that, because I'd, I'd love to have people look at what the future could be instead of would be by developers in Hartford, including why is Greenwich Avenue one-way? Anyway...
Thank you, thank you, Peter.
Thank you.
Thanks, Peter. Peter revisits that 50, 55-year, you know, tradition we have now of it being one-way, but anyway, thank you, Peter, and...
It's a disaster.
Thank you, Peter. All right, any other, any appointments or nominations?
Uh-uh.
Seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
Lauren Raven, so moved.
Janet Stone-McWigan, I second.
Well, those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWigan, yes.
Thanks, everybody, have a great day, and we'll see you soon.